All this speech is awarded with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Rita.
Here.
Rita, here, Donahue.
Here.
Here, Holly.
Here.
Holly, here, Farinow.
Here.
Here, Ossling.
Here.
Ossling, here, Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here, Carr.
Here.
Carr, here, Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here, Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here, Fulos.
Here.
Fulos, here, Johnson. Johnson, absent, Frausto.
Here.
Frausto, here, Bellado.
Here.
Bellado, here, Dieta.
Here.
Dieta, here, thirteen present.
Thank you. Move on to Presenting the General Proceedings. I need a motion to approve the City Council's minutes for the date of August the 14th, 2018. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alderman Fulos, second. Followed with Carr. Any questions?
Rita.
I abstain.
Rita abstain. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinow.
Aye.
Farinow, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Dieta.
Aye.
Dieta, aye. Twelve eyes and one expression.
Thank you very much. Now we move on to call a comment. Again, we'll try to do three minutes on information that's on the agenda. I'll just need your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Carol Pace Green, 2731 Orchard Street, Blue Island, Illinois. Certainly, one of the things that's been in discussion is with regard to the water rate increase. Further conversations that we've had, we certainly know that there's been a lot going on and things have not progressed to the point where we're at a point where we can move forward with the water rate increase at this time. What is your position, Mayor Jarvis?
It will continue the way it is right now. It's going forward.
You want to go forward?
Yes.
Okay. So that means it's going to...
It is going to go in committee, from my understanding. So it's going forward and then it's going to be discussed in committee.
It's going to be discussed in committee?
Yes.
So it's not going to be an automatic increase, is that right?
There will be an automatic increase.
Okay. If it goes through the committees, is that right?
Well, it's still under discussion, correct?
Yes, it's still under discussion. So will the aldermen have the opportunity to vote regarding the issue?
They've already voted.
I don't think the aldermen voted in favor of a water rate increase.
Previous alderman voted.
Could the aldermen that are no longer on the City Council may have voted in favor of...
Let me look at this actually right now. Those legal issues they need to be addressed, legalities.
Okay.
And that's what we're looking into right now. What can and cannot be done.
Okay. So for the time being, the planned water rate increase set for September 1st is not going to be implemented September 1st?
It will be implemented September 1st.
It will be?
Yes.
Even though there are legalities and issues with that?
There's legalities whether or not it can be overturned or not. That's what we're researching right now.
Okay. Don't you think it would be better to wait and make sure that you do it legally rather than worry about you having to overturn?
Right now it is legal. Question is whether or not it can be overturned.
Okay. Alderman, you have your work cut out for you because some of you are going to be looking to get reelected come the next election. Certainly, the issue regarding the water rate increase is not about seniors. It's really for families that are on water rate or water bill, paving plans, and our young families with four, five, six children that are going to have issues regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I'll just need your name and address.
I have the surveillance, 128 O. L. Street. And my wife and I are lifelong dwellers, love this town. However, it's gotten to a point where we're embarrassed to host functions at our house, and mainly it's because of these streets. What is the plan of attack here? I mean, it's gotten to a point, you know, three and four streets at a time. I'll be taking that dirt map by the time you get to my house.
Just let me add this. Since 1991 was our only fourth time that issue came up for referendum and was denied by the voters there, at that time it was like $31 million to do the whole city. And every time they went for a vote to try to address it citywide, the voters, they spoke and they said no, which only left it whether there's grants available, CDBG grants, state funding, Southwest Conference of Mayors, et cetera. So unfortunately, we are aggressively seeking to try to address the infrastructure issue that this administration, for the last five years, we inherited from 28 and more years behind us forward. So now the thing is, we're trying to aggressively working with Robinson Engineering is how we can address this without, since we're not home rule, in a financially feasible way that won't affect the taxpayers.
Well, I mean, obviously, there aren't too many communities, this one included, that have $30 million in coffers. So obviously, I mean, everyone here has been elected, look out for the burden of this community, correct themselves.
Correct.
So if it takes a $10, $20, $30 water rate increase, I know that's not, you know, some people are opposed to that, but I think what people want is transparency. If you're going to hit us with a $30 water bill rate increase, then we want to schedule to create something, not three at a time.
That is correct.
It's kind of like the business district on West...
In fact, there was a question that was brought up, not to interrupt you, that if there was an increase, it would be into a special fund, and it would be addressed specifically for infrastructure, for our streets.
Well, that's, and that's what I'm saying with the 1% business tax on West. We haven't seen any results other than banners, and it's been, what, two years? So I just, I implore you guys to be open and honest so we can see as citizens who pay our taxes, love this community, we just want, we want to see results. I mean, that's fair, and I believe that's fair.
You see, we've been paying $30 bucks a month for... Reddy Street, 139th Street, again, now we've got to go into the neighborhoods.
Right.
That's where we've got to go. And more...
Yeah, I mean, the alleys, the streets need, you know? But we do have to word that we're going to have transparency and be updated and...
Yes, sir.
This isn't going to be stuck in.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I want to know. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Now we move on to report of the city officials. Go ahead. I'll just need your name and address.
My name is Holly Tongard. My address is 2150 120th Place.
Yes.
I have concerns about the work that's been doing in our area, the resurfacing and the surfing streets and redoing of the alley, especially behind my house. One particular thing, it seemed like it's more shoddy work, it just called for, my garage is on a 45-degree angle, so I could drive straight on out. So I contacted the building inspector and asked them, how will they be doing the alley? So will they give it an ellipse, so when the water comes down, at least curve it away from my garage and back into the alley, because the alley is supposed to be designed to absorb water that goes down that way? And he told me, contacted the construction crew and all of that to make sure, it should be in their mindset when they put it like that. I contacted them and I pretty much had to wait until the last moment as they're doing the work. And they said, one building contractor is going to come out and he's going to explain to me how far they're going to come to my garage, how hard they want to redo the alleys, and make it at least doable. One thing the contractor said, we cannot redo my driveway. I didn't say redo my driveway. I said, yeah, lips from the city over, so maybe a foot, six inches, that just curves it out and goes back that way, keeping my garage line a little bit higher than the alley. And then he claims, no, that's private property, can't do that. But we can only go from your side to the other side, I think about what, I don't know what was the maximum length, but he said the alley length. And then just only that, it's just going to be a straight path, straight up. The following week, not only did that, but from that, from the house on the other side from me, their garages, they cut off four to five feet to their driveway going into their garage, then repaved over it, black tar, so they have perfect shots on my side, even though I was in question, like my neighbors was just one house up. It just go one short, one foot. They stopped in the alley, one foot from the garage. And all that dirt, boulders, everything, looks crummy.
Sure does.
Then the alley next, the house next door to me, five feet, the same five, four feet, that's supposed to have been, they had a concrete slab to their driveway, going into their driveway, perf, that's theirs. The alleyway, been done, but that four or five feet, straight dirt.
What we'll do is we'll have our city engineer, their company, check them out, talk to the contractors, because that contract is a whole different group than the one that's doing Longwood.
Right.
And we'll find out, we'll get answers and we'll get back to you. If I could have your address again, please?
Mine's 120th Place, 2150, Blue Island, just, we're almost down to the bottom part of Longwood, I'm just third house up, I'm 25...
Eric, could you speak to this gentleman and get his information for me?
Yeah, I even took pictures on my phone, just to make sure.
Tell me, I have it also.
Okay.
All right. We'll talk to the contractors and we'll send the city engineer...
Yeah, we're going to get that, sir.
And straighten it up. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Good night, I'll move on to report the city officials, mayor's announcements. Again, Saturday in the country, again, for a center of pain, as you see, the flags are at half-mast for that reason around the city. We did have the incident last week, last Friday, with the make a tree in. Again, it's not, we don't want to say it's total loss, the building is still up, and from my understanding, they are going to rebuild. That's all I have, city courts.
Yes, I need a motion to approve. Block party requires to locate 119 Place in Longwood to Washington on Saturdays at 10:22 to 11:00 until 10:00.
There's a motion by Alderman Ossling, second. By Alderman Holly. Any questions? Go ahead, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinow.
Aye.
Farinow, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Abstain.
Thompson abstain. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Dieta.
Aye.
Dieta, aye. Twelve eyes and one expression.
Thank you very much. Any bits?
Yeah, there's two bits to approve on tonight. First one is bid resurfacing, or street resurfacing and sidewalk construction, Rexford Street and Irving Avenue, board recommendations of pure employee paving, court, $247,000, $675.
Motion by Alderman Ossling, the second. By Alderman Vera. Any questions? Go ahead, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinow.
Aye.
Farinow, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Dieta.
Aye.
Dieta, aye. Thirteen eyes and one expression.
Thank you.
Next, the first street resurfacing, California Gardens, board recommendations for gallop curb asphalt, $539,192.40.
The motion? Almost by the time Holly's second, by Alderman Bellado. Any questions? Go ahead, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinow.
Aye.
Farinow, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Dieta.
Aye.
Dieta, aye. Thirteen eyes and one expression.
Thank you very much. Anything else? City Treasurer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before we go into the treasurer's business, I'd like to have Mr. Gavin coming up, the Casperic Associates, to go over the audit, 2017 audit, and to apologize, I wasn't aware that they were, they were supposed to bring the audits for all the aldermen. So hopefully they should have been, everybody should have got it in their computer. It was supposed to be hard copies, but hopefully we can go through this, ask the questions and Mr. Gavin will be glad to...
Thank you. Okay, my name's Tim Gavin. I'm the Senior Audit Manager with John Casperic Company, and we have completed the audit for the city for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017. I'm going, I won't take up too much of your time, but I wanted to go through, you know, how the audit went, and some very brief highlights of the financial report. And first of all, I'd like to thank the city and the Finance Department for the cooperation and assisting us with completing the audit. The first item I'll point out is, I don't know if anyone's following along, but the first page, the first number page of the audit report, is the first page with our letterhead on it, and that is the independent auditors' report. Essentially, it is the product of our audit, and the top of the second page, that is our actual opinion, which we refer to as an unmodified opinion, which is also known as the clean audit opinion. It's the highest level of assurance we are allowed to give. Immediately following that is what I say, if you don't read any other part of the financial report, read the Management's Discussion and Analysis. So starting at page three, the Management's Discussion and Analysis presents an overview of the financial statements, an explanation of how it's formatted, what information is contained within them, as well as comparative summarized financial information and explanations for some of the significant changes. It's very useful information, very easy to read. I know these reports are a little hard to digest at times, so that pages three through 10, I'm sorry, pages three through 13, very useful information. If you don't read anything else, do that. Also, on page 18 is a summary of the financial performance for the year for the villages, I'm sorry, the city's governmental funds. So the general fund, basically all the funds except for the pension funds and water sewer and parking, you know, the enterprise funds. So the general fund did show a net decrease in fund balance of about $500,000 for the year. However, in total, the governmental fund showed an increase of about 1.2, just shy of 1.3 million for the year. The ending fund balance of the general fund is sitting at a negative $4.1 million as of December 31st. The next item I'll mention, the proprietary funds or the enterprise funds of the city, the water, the golf course. The results of operations for those funds are shown on pages 22 through 24. The water fund did show a total net decrease in net position of about $200,000. The golf course did show a net increase of about $83,000, $84,000. In addition to that, there are some lengthy notes and some of the newer items in the note disclosures, one of which is a newer disclosure related to what we call risk management or the city's self-insurance program. It's, it provides a kind of a summary of the claims liability that the city is exposed to for the workers' comp and general liability insurance coverage, that's on page 49 of the report. In addition to that, a few years ago, there were new standards that came out requiring extensive disclosures regarding the pension funds, so IMRF, SLAP, Police Pension and Fire Pension Funds. The disclosures for that start on page 50. Like I said, they are extensive, so there's a lot of actuarial jargon and information in there. But I would actually direct you to, immediately following the note disclosures, starting on page 72, is actually summarized trend information regarding the pension fund. So if you want to keep track of the health of how well those funds, the plans are funded, you can take a look at that. Currently, there are three to four years of trend information that will eventually build up to 10 years as we, as we go through the next few years. So just as a, as a summary on page 5, I'm sorry, page 72, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, currently, the city's portion of that plan is funded at 102, almost 103%. The SLAP plan is very small, but it's funded 135%. The Police Pension Fund on page 74, the current year is about 31% funded, and the following page, the Fire Pension Plan, is about 24% funded. The rest of the report contains some more detailed information, mostly is budget versus actual, with some line nine level detail that I won't get into right now, but at this point, I'm more than happy to take any questions and counsel my...
Go ahead. I just have three questions. Probably, the golf course revenue increase, is the gaming revenue generated from that facility also taken into consideration of the total?
Any revenue from gaming is actually included in the general fund.
Okay. So that's not associated to that increase there?
Correct.
Okay. Police and fire pension funds. Was there an increase from last year to this year as far as percentage of, that it's funded?
Yes, there was. And that's actually where the trend information becomes very helpful, the police pension fund. The, the net, net position based on the equity of the fund for, the police pension fund went up about 1.1, almost 1.5 million, and the fire pension fund went up about $300,000. And most of that is due to positive investment investments.
That's it.
Go ahead, all.
Thank you. You said that the golf course made up $84,000?
Yes.
That's without their payment of water. If they had paid their water, what would have happened?
I'm not sure what the water bill would be, so I, but I can tell you that, that $84,000 is not included a payment for March during 2017.
Yeah, I want to make that very clear. Thank you.
Anybody else?
On that issue of the golf course, if you could please, if you can, clarify revenue versus expenses from the depreciation? And then, yeah, just could that right now?
Okay. The revenues of the golf course for 2017 were just under $1 million at about $974,000. The expenses before depreciation was about $776,000. Depreciation on fixed assets came in at $113,000. And just to give you an idea of what that means essentially, instead of expensing capital items as they are purchased, the expenses spread out over the course of the asset life. So, you know, equipment is usually five to 10 years, buildings and land improvements are 10, 40, or 50 years, so that, that expense is spread out over the life of, led to the assets. So after, so before depreciation, there was a little over $200,000 increase in that position.
The reason I wanted to clarify that is basically that from then, our fiscal year ends December, so the golf course has to run through January, February, possibly even March, you know, possibly very little income. Okay, so the expenditures that will accrue there will be deducted from that, that positive of roughly $200, whatever it is. Okay? The plan isn't in discussion right now. Haven't decided yet, with Mayor, Mr. Marzal, myself, to see if we can move some money to pay the water, okay, to address the water. Otherwise, technically, that $200,000 is going to be down to maybe $100,000 after you take all the expenses.
Any other questions?
Hi, Alderman.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you very much.
Next is the, should add the copy of transfer of funds from restricted and unrestricted funds, a total of $516,465,800.
Did you motion?
I did motion.
You did motion by Alderman Ossling, second by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Go ahead, please.
Rita.
I abstain.
Rita abstain. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinow.
Aye.
Farinow, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Dieta.
Aye.
Dieta, aye. Twelve eyes and one expression.
Thank you very much.
So the last thing is that the treasurer's report's been published, and the report called, we have published, you know, community and everyone else, that's already been done.
Could you speak up, please? I can barely hear you. I can't hear. Speak up, please.
The treasurer's report has been published after the audit was completed. The treasurer's report has been completed and published.
Can you speak? And five.
And five, correct.
And five, count, correct. Anything else on this issue, Your Honor? Thank you. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. So with one set of ordinances on the agenda, ordinance number 2018-042, 043, 044, 045, and 046. These are ordinances restricting portions of certain streets, the handicap park only. The locations are 2047 Broadway, 2627 West 121st Street, 12339 Maple Avenue, 12951 Division Street, and 13121 Chicago Street, all located within the city. Can vote on these as a group.
All is approved?
Yep.
Okay, that's all. Have a motion? Do you have a motion by Alderman Vera? Do you have a second, Alderman Rita? Any questions? Go ahead, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farinow.
Aye.
Farinow, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Fulos.
Aye.
Fulos, aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Dieta.
Aye.
Dieta, aye. Thirteen eyes and one expression.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all, Mayor.
Committee reports, committee development committee?
Yes, Your Honor, the Community Development Committee met on August 7th, and the meeting was called over at 7:31 PM. Present were Alderman Bellado, Holly, Ossling, and Thompson, absent were Alderman Frausto, Johnson, and Rita. Also present were Director Mike Marzal and a number of other property owners. Public comment, Dona D. Filippo came to complain that her neighbor has shut down their truck pointing job because of encroachment on their property. She's wondering if there's anything that can be done to make people allow temporary encroachment for maintenance work to be done on properties. She says the only thing that can be done is getting a court order to allow the work to be done. Director Marzal said he checked with the police and they said it's a civil matter and that the city cannot override a state statute. Under new business, Director Marzal said the developer of 12801 Western Avenue is interested in buying the parking lot just south of the building, has a price of $45,000. Alderman Bellado said he's not in favor of selling land, especially a parking lot. We can put it in the sale agreement that if they sell the building, the lot reverts back to the city. Alderman Holly said maybe check to see if they'd be okay with leasing it, and they would maintain it. Director Marzal said that he would take that back to the developers. Nableton Auto, 2900 127th Street, is doing about $14,000 in building improvements, including sealing the parking lot, painting the building, redoing the signage. Tenochtitlan at 12947 Western Avenue, Eli Rodriguez presented a business development district grant application for new signage painted on the wall on the second floor of the building facing north, and to enclose the pavilion to make it look nicer and make it a little more weatherproof. and to enclose the pavilion to make it look nicer and make it a little more weatherproof for winter parties. The plans are reviewed, and it is noted that it might look better for windows to be on top of the new wall picture. Building plans will need to be reviewed by the building department. The plans are reviewed by the committee, and it was moved by Alderman Vlado and second by Alderman Ossling to approve a business development district grant as reimbursement of cost of doing the project to no more than five thousand dollars or fifty percent of the cost of the project. All were in favor, motion passed. It was also noted that the power, to be visible in the park, is attracting a lot of homeless people. Mr. Marzal will ask the hospital to remove the power. Mr. Rodriguez offered the use of the power from his restaurant for events that happen in the park. Fraternal War of Eagles, twenty-four twenty-seven Grove, Jason Barrett presented a business development district grant application for the completion of an outdoor pavilion, park to be used by Eagles members and available for rent by the community. The plans are reviewed, building plans will need to be reviewed by the building department. The plans are reviewed by the committee, and it was moved by Alderman Ossling and second by Alderman Vlado to approve a business development district grant as reimbursement of cost of doing the project to no more than five thousand dollars or fifty percent of the cost of the project. All were in favor, and motion passed. Two-zero-one-one Displays, Mr. Adrian presented two options for a fence on his property. Option A was accepted, it was moved by Alderman Vlado and second by Alderman Thompson to approve the fences presented. All were in favor, motion passed. One-twenty-eight oh-five Division, Mr. Everett presented plans for a fence for his side yard. He's proposing putting up a chain link fence. After much discussion, Mr. Everett agreed to put up a wood fence instead of a chain link fence. With that concession, it was moved by Alderman Vlado and second by Alderman Ossling to allow wood fence as presented. All were in favor, motion passed. Nineteen forty-nine Grove, the new owner of the property is asking for a waiver of about eight-hundred dollars of fees on the property if they come in compliance with other issues to get up to code. It was moved by Alderman Ossling and second by Alderman Thompson to waive the fees. All were in favor, motion passed. Twenty-fifty-four, one-hundred-twentieth Street, the owner is requesting waiver of bounty and fines. The property has been vacant since two thousand and six. Notices have been sent to the owner of record, the owner has not registered, the property is vacant. A stop work order has been posted, staff recommends no waiver of fines or penalties. It was moved by Alderman Ossling and second by Alderman Thompson to deny waiving fees. All were in favor, motion passed. Twenty-seven fifty-five Broadway, the owner is requesting waiver of bounties and fines. It is not fit for occupancy, are no attempts to make the building habitable. It was moved by Alderman Ossling and second by Alderman Thompson to deny waiving fees. All were in favor, motion passed. One-twenty-four thirty-one Western, the owner is looking to put up a mural. Staff is looking for direction, is it a mural or a sign? The presented artwork is a sign advertisement, not a journal, not a billboard. It should be treated as a sign, was consensus. Building department reports were reviewed, total revenues for July were sixty-eight thousand, eight-hundred, ten dollars and ninety-five cents, bringing total revenues through July to three-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, twenty dollars and eighty-nine cents. There being no further business, it was moved by Alderman Ossling and second by Alderman Thompson to adjourn. All were in favor, and the meeting adjourned at eight forty-seven PM. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, September fourth, at seven-thirty PM, Call of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Alvin. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee met on August twenty-first. Members present, Alderman Thompson, Vera, Holly, Farrell, Ossling, except for Alderman Frosto. Also present, Director Mike Marzal, Senior Accountant Janelle Hunt, and Bob Van Dyke. There was no public comment. Finance approved the following, accounts payable for eight-twenty-nine two thousand and eighteen in the amount of one million, two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents. Some of the large invoice items are the quarterly nine-one-one police, which was sixty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. The abandoned house grant reimbursement was forty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. The Lakeshore Recycling, our garbage, was one-hundred-and-ten thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. Metro South Tax Redevelopment Agreement was two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, two-hundred-and-one dollar and seventy-three cents. Golf Course, this is Service Gate, was forty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. And the IG IG Grant, the Antero Group for one-hundred-nineteenth Street, was four-hundred-and-forty thousand, eight-hundred-and-ten dollars and zero cents. And I need a motion to approve.
Motion, second by Alvin Farrell, any questions? Go ahead. Alvin, go ahead.
Were the police and the rental cell phone the last one?
This, there's, I believe, three payments, so this is the second.
Okay. Well, that's not going anywhere, but okay.
There's a motion?
Yeah, you said the quarterly payment was for, not for the hospital, it was for...
Police nine-one-one.
I'm sorry, what did, I didn't, maybe I can...
Police nine-one-one was on the last one as well?
This is the quarterly nine-one-one, Oak County Sheriff's. I didn't, I don't remember being on the last one, sorry.
There's a motion, there's a second, go ahead, please.
Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no.
Aye.
Holly, aye.
Aye.
Farrell.
Aye.
Ossling.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Car.
Vlado Stain.
Car, Vlado Stain, Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye.
No.
Slattery, no.
No.
Coolos.
Aye.
Frosto.
Aye.
Vlado.
No.
Vlado, no.
Viera. Aye.
Viera, aye. Eight ayes, four noes, and one extension.
Motion carries.
The next is the payroll for August tenth, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of three-hundred-and-twenty thousand, ninety-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. I need a motion to approve.
Motion, second by Alvin Pittman. Any questions? Go ahead.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye.
Aye.
Donahue, aye.
Aye.
Holly, aye.
Aye.
Farrell.
Aye.
Ossling.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Car.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye.
Aye.
Coolos.
Aye.
Frosto.
Aye.
Vlado.
Aye.
Vlado, aye.
Aye.
Viera.
Aye.
thirteen aye.
Thank you.
Finance approved your request to enter into an agreement with Career Builders for Employment Screening Service, and I need a motion to approve.
Motion carries, second by Alvin Farrell, any questions? Yes, sir. Chairman, can you just go into, just to a little more detail what that's going to entail? Please.
Career Builders is a, the city has been using the police department to run pre-employment screening. And this is a company that will screen our full-time employees to the price of forty-eight dollars, and full-time executive employees to the price of ninety thousand. And this is multi-jurisdiction, national criminal index search, federal criminal search, employment credit record, education verification, and employee verification.
Thank you.
So, Mike, what, how much does the police department charge?
The police department does their own screening.
So, why would you pay ninety thousand dollars?
It's not ninety thousand.
It's ninety.
It's ninety dollars every...
It's a ninety thousand. That's why we were like...
Yeah, sorry, ninety, no, no, ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand.
Time package is forty-eight, and the full-time executive package is ninety dollars.
I can say. The committee was explaining to us that this will bring us into compliance, not to say that we haven't been after it, we're not complying, but this will bring us into compliance with all the various laws and regulations that we need to be in compliance with to protect us from future life burdens. Got a motion, do you have a second?
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye.
Aye.
Donahue, aye.
Aye.
Holly.
Aye.
Farrell.
Aye.
Ossling.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Car.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Slattery.
No.
Coolos.
Aye.
Frosto.
Aye.
Vlado.
No.
Vlado, aye.
Aye.
Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you.
Finance approved your request to enter into agreement with Lexa Poll for state-specific policies and verifiable policy training. The amount would be seventeen thousand, six oh three, and this year we would be able to take it out of the drug forfeiture fund. I need a motion to approve.
Motion, second by Alvin Donahue, any questions? Go ahead, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye.
Aye.
Donahue, aye.
Aye.
Holly, aye.
Aye.
Farrell.
Aye.
Ossling.
Aye.
Thompson.
Aye.
Car.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Slattery.
Aye.
Frosto.
Aye.
Vlado.
Aye.
Vlado, aye.
Aye.
thirteen aye.
Thank you.
No further business, the meeting was adjourned at seven-thirty-five. Our next meeting is September fourth, at seven o'clock, East Side.
Thank you very much. Public health and safety committee?
I'll report, Your Honor, our next meeting will be Tuesday, September eleventh, at six o'clock, during East Side.
Thank you. Municipal Services Committee?
No report.
Thank you. Do you know when your next meeting is?
Well, we just had our meeting just now, it is September, I think, twenty-fourth, if I'm not mistaken. September twenty-fifth at six-thirty in East Side.
All right, thank you. Judiciary Committee?
We met Monday, August twentieth, I'll call the board at six PM. Present were Alderman Farrell, Pittman, Coolos, and Vera. Also present were Attorney of the City Attorney, Lieutenant Kennedy, Kevin and Kathy O'Connell of Pub Time, Lori Campione, resident and representing Saint Walter School, Ray and Jenny Cattello, resident and member of Ziegberger's Pizza. In public comment, the O'Konnels, the Cattellos, and Lori Campione all spoke in favor of adoption of an ordinance for regularly Queen of Paris raffles. As another item, Attorney Kennedy presented a draft ordinance that would create rules for public comment. Committee members will review this ordinance, proposed ordinance, for action at the next judiciary committee meeting. There was, there has been a request for a stop sign of Irving at one-hundred-and-twenty-second, but no action was taken on that item. Ordinance for Monday through Friday, no parting of Cooper's Grove draft ordinance was presented by Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Vera requested additional information about parameters for the community restriction. Staff will research and prevent findings at the next judiciary committee meeting. Regarding the raffle and Indian ordinance, Attorney Kennedy presented draft language that requires additional specific terms and fees. Staff will research, and the draft ordinance will be presented for review and action at the next judiciary committee meeting. There were no Alderman's concerns, was moved to adjourn by Alderman Vera, seconded by Pittman. We adjourned at six fourteen. The next meeting of Judiciary Committee will be Monday, September seventeenth, at eighteen at six PM, in City Hall, in Kansas.
Thank you very much. Any other medical comments? Go ahead, Alvin.
Mr. May, I don't know the work that's going on in my ward. I'm very disturbed or perturbed by the behavior of some of these contractors. When there are so many people working and getting paid big money, they don't look like me. I've been working, and then they're insulting people in my ward, and I'm not going to tolerate it. There was dust blowing from a machine throughout the neighborhood. I called the San Diego, I called the police department, I called you, I didn't get a response. We have sick people in my ward, and when people are arrogant, this is Mr. Joker telling. I don't know which one of these contracting companies he's with, but he should be fired. No one should get a contract if they're going to be disrespectful to the people in the ward. I'm not going to tolerate it as long I'm in the ward. I'm going to speak out on it, and I'm not going to put up with it. People, I said, don't look like me, who come in my area and get paid and be insulted. Mr. Talbot, in that part of the alley, the gentleman who was working at that contractor finished many of the people that entered in the back of that alley on one-hundred-and-twentieth place, but failed to complete and do the work at Mr. Ob Talbot's house and at Robin and Joseph Green's house, twenty-one fifty-four West one-twenty-third Street. I invited before I came here tonight, and I took pictures of what they did. It's disgraceful, and I'm not going to tolerate it. Something's going to be changed here in Blue Island. I don't see any African-American contractors doing any work here, and when I'm going to be insulted by people who don't look like me, it's going to stop. I'm not going to tolerate it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Alvin Vlado?
I got a couple of concerns. First one is a resident asked about a water pump at the entrance was taken down. Is there going to be plans to replace it? Well, I guess we'll have to look into it. Hopefully we will. And then I have a couple of questions for, I might as well ask now. Judiciary Committee, any progress with returning homes to single family or second entrances or apartments? Are these houses, there are four or five apartments in a house?
Yeah, it's a pretty complicated issue. The city is researching it, and it is on our, it's on our future agenda. It's going to take some work. There, actually, there was a little encouraging information about the potential that the city may actually have some of the authorities already that we, particularly with regards to single and multiple entrances and demons, and we're looking to have some hope, and that may actually already be some proof. We've got some work, but they haven't confirmed that yet. And then we will, you know, we're continuing a little bit, for sure.
I thought there was an ordinance, and that some of the properties were grandfathered in per the ordinance. When they read in the book.
My best understanding is that we don't know at this moment. I might be wrong at this moment, because we got the judiciary committee, and they've looked at it since I first... They're looking into it.
They, I think that they adopted the International Building Code. And I think that that says no, but then there's some ordinances on the book that our board said that they, that is a yes, but what they don't know is if there's been any ordinances in between that did some of that. So, that's what they're trying, what they're trying to...
And this goes to the issue that we do have, that our ordinance, our codes are a mess. And we haven't, you know, we seem to, I mean, that costs money too, really costs money. So, we're kind of dealing with that issue. It's a fight right now.
Thank you. Yes? Go ahead, Alvin.
There seems to be an increase of homeless civilians from one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh on Western to only young Western, and apparently they're harassing the curvy middle school kids for money and food when they get out of school.
We'll bring that to attention to the police. I've addressed that with some of the churches here, and there's an organization that met us around a month and a half ago who deals with the homeless, not only here, in Chicago, basically, and they want to start something here. But again, we will address it, we will address, especially with minors.
Last Tuesday, there was a tornado siren that went off, and I received many complaints on the east side.
Am I mistaken? Was it us, or was Cal Park? Because I also heard I was in town when it went off. I don't know if she, if we find out it was us or Cal Park.
Okay. Maybe in the future, if it ever happens again, if we can have the new, the old code red go out to the...
Smart nine-one-one?
Because I did receive that call, so...
But it was, was it Cal Park? No, it was, it was Ironbell Park. Okay. So, I remember we checked with the required district, and they did not plug it, so it went off because of heat or whatever. We're checking, we're checking everything right now. Go ahead, Alvin.
Mr. Foster, if you, if you can just confirm, I did email you because I had some issues with the alley and the parts of the driveways that are missing, and you said that they were going to be back within the next two weeks to finish that up? That they know that those parts are missing, but not...
No, I wasn't saying that, I was saying that it wasn't finished. But I think that day I emailed that, or the next day, they were out there doing the surface. Between, I don't think they were going beyond the right way, but they were going, it was a ten-foot alley, and then they were doing, connecting up the asphalt to the existing driveway. Some were completely missing, never there to begin with. So, they didn't replace anything there. So they didn't replace anything that wasn't there. So there were some that are missing. There was never, um, an apron, driveway apron to begin with.
Is that the usual?